It's exactly five o'clock. I'll call to order the Bend City Council work session. First up is our quarterly council goal updates.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Perkins and Council. I'm Stephanie Better, Assistant City Manager, and I am joined this evening by Russ Grayson, Assistant City Manager and Chief Operations Officer for your council goal quarterly update. Tonight's update is a milestone for council goals as we'll be closing out the 2023-25 goals and embarking on the goals that you recently adopted for the current biennium. We'll be doing this by taking a few minutes to reflect on the accomplishments and highlights from the last set of council goals with a focus on growth and infrastructure. We'll then shift to the current council goals by reviewing current and upcoming projects, policy discussions, and council work sessions. Brian Rankin is then going to join us to provide an overview and update on the growth plan, and then we'll wrap things up with an update and then bike ways with Ryan. In the interest of time this evening, I'll be keeping the recap of the previous goals pretty high level focusing on the highlights. But did want to note that there's a comprehensive status report that was included in the council packet that includes specific details on each of the actions. So taking a quick look at the 2023 to 2025 council goals by the numbers, there were five goals, 13 strategies, and 49 actions. And as of June 30th, 43 or 88% of those actions were completed. There's 10% still in progress with one action on hold. You're probably wondering what that one action is. That was the action to advance local gun safety policies, and that's currently on hold due to legal uncertainty related to recent state legislation. You'll also note that 53% of the actions that have been incorporated into the current set of council goals, that includes those five actions that are in progress as well as a number of the actions that we noted as complete. You're probably wondering how that math works. A number of the actions that were are complete because the scope of work that we identified for the last two years has been completed. Many of those projects will continue into the next biennium with a new scope of work and new focus. So while numbers are helpful, they don't always tell the whole story. So I'd like to quickly walk through the five goal areas and highlight some of the accomplishments. You'll notice as I go through these accomplishments, the the highlights around growth and development are a little light. That's because Russ is going to go into those in detail later in the presentation. So starting with accessible and effective city government, we developed and piloted an equity framework as well as developed and implemented a language access policy and program. We rolled out a number of innovative engagement and outreach approaches, including roundtables, pop-ups, open houses, and the neighborhood trailer that's out and about in community. We are getting really close to opening the public works campus that slated to open in a couple of months in the fall. The right away code was adopted and implemented, and we've integrated infrastructure asset management into our operations for both prioritization and making maintenance decisions. On affordable housing and sustainable development, we secured $5 million pro housing grant for affordable housing development and process improvements, as well as some additional shelter funding in the last legislative session. We partnered with Deschutes County on the temporary safe stay area, created a homeless services grant program for safe parking, completed a number of studies, including one around climate friendly areas in market sector. We have continued to improve on our permitting timelines. We also completed an RFP and sold properties at Juniper Ridge, as well as surplus two city-owned properties, the proceeds of those going towards affordable housing, and then created the site-specific housing and employment. Focusing in on environment and climate, council adopted and updated Community Climate Action Plan just a few months ago, and we've been implementing C cap outreach and education strategies, as well as piloting some micro grids and energy storage at the new public works campus. Natural gas policy options analysis was completed, and some of those options will be along with some work of a working group coming to you. In the next few months, the tree code was adopted and implemented, made changes to auto-dependent uses, expanded our water conservation programs, have continued planning efforts around the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, and have made some great progress on the water reclamation facility. Turning to public safety, we have continued to maintain fire and EMS response times as well as cardiac survivability, have done staffing studies for both police and fire, have focused and invested in some technology plans for both police and fire, and police is has evaluated automated traffic enforcement. We've established our Department of Emergency Management and begun development of continuity of operation and natural mitigation plans, and then conducted community education, prevention, and preparedness programs. Deschutes Alerts has been a big part of our outreach and around community preparedness, and I just learned today that we've had 955 new sign-ups for Deschutes Alerts just since April. For transportation infrastructure, just a couple of quick highlights before I turn it over to Russ to provide some more detailed updates on those projects. We updated the SDC methodology, implemented transportation, these phases one and two, and completed the in conduit hydro feasibility study. So just a few things to reflect on and accomplishments to celebrate. So I'll turn it over to Russ now to do a deeper dive into growth and infrastructure.
Okay, so well, we're going to go through projects that were completed over the past couple of years and then what's really kind of coming over in the next 12 months. Before I get into this, as you can see, even with what Stephanie went over and what we're going to present here, there's a lot of work done. So first of all, I want to thank council for their involvement and direction to keep everything moving because there's a lot of balls in the air that were juggling at one time, and also our staff for the commendable effort they did to bring all these things actually to to life and position to get them constructed. So I'm just going to go over kind of what we did and on our projects, then we'll go into what's coming. We're talking, start talking about all the policy discussions that are upcoming and then lay out the next six months of work sessions to give you an idea of what what's coming in front of you, all tied to our next biennium council goals that are now in effect. So talking on here are the here's a highlight of not all of them, but kind of the major projects that were completed over the past two years. We'll start with the Newport Avenue Corridor project that was completed in 2023. That project did win a major award with the Oregon Chapter of the American Public Works Association for the all the work on the transportation and utility work, especially the stormwater on that. Wilson that Wilson Avenue Corridor project was fully completed, really focused with the work at the Wilson and Third Roundabout, sorry, Wilson and Third Intersection. Purcell Bowlard was also completed. That included the extension by the hospital and the improvements to the Purcell and NEF intersection. The Greenwood Avenue project that was also completed this year, and and we'll have upcoming updates on that that I'll get into here in a minute. Second Street, we just did the celebration for that a couple of weeks ago, I believe, for the grand opening of that. That was part of the one of the first urban renewal projects in the core area that got constructed to set the stage for development in that area. The only improvement we opened up, as everyone's aware, the critical wall and only intersection. And then we're still working on the rest of it, but that that getting that intersection was a major accomplishment that just occurred for summer. On the utility front, just take a second to look at the size of that water line. You know, this is a middle of the night tie-in they did. That was a major waterline improvement. It was one of the top priorities in our water master plan to basically get a new water line constructed from the Mount Washington and Sheldon Park intersection all the way over to only and Second Third Street right now with continuation over to the Pilot Butte in the future, the Pilot Butte Reservoir area, but it's critical to be able to, you know, have flexibility with our waters and move water around the city. We continue to do our septic sewer programs. And one of the major projects that we did was the Ferguson Road Subject Sewer Extension, which which not only achieved the goals of extending sewer lines into septic areas where we have failing septic systems, but also set up the Southeast Area Lift Station, because that is the discharge point for that lift station that's currently under construction. As always, we have waterline replacements going on. This is just an example of one of them on Quimby Avenue. And then we're also making sure that we take care of our our other infrastructure like the, so this is just a quick picture of what what the inside of one of our reservoirs looked like. We we went in there and rehabbed and resurfaced one of our reservoirs. So there's this ongoing maintenance that needs to be done to our system to make sure that it operates correctly. And then lastly, it wasn't directly a city project, but we were heavily involved in the $190 million North Corridor project on US 97 and US 20. So that that is just the highlight of what just happened in the past two years, right, that got completed. Moving into what what's going on, what we have in current projects, what's currently in construction, what's upcoming. So we'll start on a couple of facilities. So as Stephanie alluded to, the Jennifer Ridge Public Works Campus is in full steam. We're actually, we have, it is on schedule and moving dates right now of October, November to start moving our teams up there. At the same time, we're building the air traffic control tower at the Bend Airport. That is scheduled to be done in the spring of next year. The Southeast Area Sewer Lift Station is also getting is under construction and nearing completion. This is a major infrastructure element that is needed to serve areas of development in the Southeast Area, which we're starting to have a lot of conversations on on the development side. And then also under construction, we have only from wall to Second Street, that continuation of that project, Bear Creek and 27th just started. Stat Street's waterline project is underway. We're in the middle of the 2025 septic sewer projects. We're doing a lot of work of either decommissioning or rehabbing several pump stations on the sewer side around town, and we're making improvements to our water reclamation facility. Also, on the private development side, there's several kind of key projects going on that are we have road closures right now at Skyline Ranch at Skyliners. We're making improvements to actually open up Yeoman Street from 18th all the way past the Chutes Market Road into Petrosa. That is a requirement of the Petrosa Master Plan. But that includes two canal crossings and that roundabout that's currently under construction at Deschutes Market and Yeoman. And then with the Jackster project, we're actually, they're they're closed right now doing improvements to Industrial Way and connecting Sizemore Street over to Colorado, which is another critical link in our system. What's going to be starting in the next 12 months is in the map on the right is just a highlight of where where these projects are located and kind of how they're scattered around town. So we're going to be doing the the final improvements on the Wilson and Cooley Avenue Corridor projects at the railroad crossings that all got the all the paperwork and kind of permits that we need. Those have been established. And so we'll start to see work at those to kind of connect. Those are kind of the last connection points of the multimodal system in that area and also safety. The Ben Bike Ways project that Ryan's going to talk about, that's going to get started. Butler Butler Market Corridor improvements. Franklin Avenue from Fourth to Eighth Street is going to get going. Galvison Corridor Project, which we recently talked about at the Community Building Subcommittee, will be moving. The Ferguson Road and 15th Street Roundabout will also go into construction, and then we're also talking about the NEF Corridor improvements should also start construction in the next 12 months. What's in design behind that? We have the improvements on re-market with the GeoBond, so the railway over crossing the bridge that is in design right now, as well as the the re-marketing of 15th Street Roundabout expansion. Franklin Avenue, we're in we're being in conversations on the Hill to Fourth Street. What are we doing there? But that that project is in design right now. The on a road extension that gets us over by the crux area to connect from Bond Street over to Third Street with that underutilized underpass on the Parkway. There's four intersections that are going to be improved on Revere in the Revere Avenue area that are all part of the GeoBond. We're in design on that riverfront street improvements. That's a joint project with BPRD. We have the next round of neighborhood safety, street safety projects that are going to continue to move forward. And then we're also in design on the South Aubrey Butte Drainage Project, which was also another critical part of our stormwater plan. And then kind of one of the keynote projects in there is the one on the left. We are going into design right now with ODOT. ODOT's leading that project on the Hawthorne Bike and Pedestrian Bridge. How are we doing? Good? I'm going to keep going. At the same time, we are doing on the infrastructure planning side. It is critical work that we need to make sure that our plans are up to date, but this is also the foundational work that'll go into into relation to the growth plan that Brian's going to be talking about here in a minute. So we are working on the collection system master plan, the stormwater master plan, the water, the wastewater reclamation facility plan, and our water filtration facility plan, which we call Outback. At the same time, we are in active conversations and moving the process along to acquire more property to to allow for future expansion in the needs out at Outback as part of our water system. So that's all on the kind of the city, the city side of city projects on the on the development side over the past two years. With the help of council, we completed the 100-acre one-time UGV expansion site selection for Caldera Ranch. The Stevens Road Track Concept Plan got finalized. We brought Pontarosa, the Pontarosa UGV area in and have a master plan there, did a modification of the Wildflower Master Plan, which is under construction. That's over at 15th and Wilson, and then we also created and implemented the site-specific tax increment financing program as well. On the code updates relating from both the development code and the municipal code, start on the housing side. We did code updates to remove the the residential high maximum density. We did middle housing updates, did we implemented the tree code. We made changes to the landscaping, especially in the park strip areas. Allowed housing in non-residential areas in connection with some bills that came out of the state, and then recently just approved some additional middle housing to allow second ADUs and row housing. Other code updates that happened over the past couple of years were the sign, we did updates to the sign code. Both both on the general sign code and sign districts, also portable signs and murals, which was just approved. We prohibited new auto, we prohibited new auto-dependent uses in the convenience commercial. We modified the council appeal process, updated the floodplain code, and implemented a new parking code. So what's upcoming as we start to move forward? So on the private development side over, we think over the next year, we're going to see, we're already, we're going to be talking tonight about the OCU Master Plan modification. We will most likely see a master plan come in on Caldera Ranch, which is that one-time UGV expansion I just talked about. We are also looking to, we're in conversations on hopefully bringing it forward, a master plan for the Stevens Track UGV area. The Caraway Master Plan, which is up north, is back in play. Not sure if that's going to need a modification or not, but the master plan was approved, then everything kind of went on hold. We're now re-engaged in conversations with property owners up there and developers. We think there's going to be a master plan modification to Timber Yards. We're in conversations with that developer as well. And then we're also in active conversations with several areas in the Southeast Area or several properties in the Southeast Area and knows that most likely going to move over the next year as well. And then we are now, we are just initiating conversations with a potential national plan at Murphy and 15th, which is that area just north of Alpenglow Park off of 15th. So moving now to policy discussions on what you're going to be seeing and what we're going to be talking about coming out of the council goals. So just kind of putting these into big buckets, we've we've already initiated the conversations around transportation standards and how we're going to do work with that. Also, development infrastructure requirements, what we want to, do we want to modify anything we have around that? We're going to be talking about what we're doing with all the midtown crossings. So that's Franklin, Greenwood, and Hawthorne. We're going to have a prioritization of funding conversation specifically around transportation that will have a heavy focus on the next round of GeoBond projects. That includes the ODOT projects, how do we look at safety projects, and then the midtown crossing direction and making sure we have the right prioritization scheduled and set up there. We're going to be having conversations around the urban renewal areas and what next steps are in each one of these for Juniper Ridge, the Core Area, and Murphy Crossing. We're going to have a conversation on the site-specific TIF, and if we want to change any policies there and continue that program, have a tree code kind of one-year review as well because council asked for that, how that tree code's being implemented. We're talking about the Housing Funding Group that just is starting off to get initiated right now, and then in that kind of the big, the big focus is going to be around the growth plan that Brian's going to go into here in a minute. So how is this all going to work with work sessions? I'm just going to outline the net between now and the end of the year, kind of as we start to put a schedule together. Again, these are, I'd say these are tentative, but they do start to show up on on the council's schedule. And we're starting to book a lot of the work sessions up between now and end of the year. So at the stewardship subcommittee at the end of July, we'll be talking about the water reclamation facility plan on August 18th. That's when we start the new council schedule, which Stephanie will talk about later this evening. We're going to be bringing back the discussion to get direction on re-market and the bond roundabout, and also give an update on electrification. On the 18th of the Community Building Subcommittee, we're going to be talking about the Collection System Master Plan, the Ben Traffic Safety Action Plan, and also give an update on the private development engineering reviews. September 2nd, the ATRAC Work Plan comes back to council work session. On September 15th, this is where we were going to come and have conversations with council on the midtown crossings, so Greenwood, Franklin, and Hawthorne. We'll talk about the Greenwood one-year follow-up and provide data and information from both the the survey that's out there as well as data that we've been gathering on that corridor. Talk about the next steps on Franklin, and then also try to get, you know, you start the conversation on what are we doing with Hawthorne with the bridge, and then what the connections to the bridge on as we land on on either side and kind of how we want to approach that in terms of funding. That will lead us into that September 29th work session, which will be all around the funding and prioritization. So this is when we will have conversations with, are we moving any of those projects around? And that's why we want to have those pre-discussions on remarketing and bond as well as the midtown crossings so that we can go into that separate September 29th work session and have a pretty good conversation on where are the priorities? Are we shifting funding around? What and kind of where where do we have kind of firm direction from hands on how to move forward, and then where are there other discussions we still need to have to figure out how we want to continue to move all of our projects forward? Quarterly update on October 13th will be around economic prosperity, and that's when we'll also bring back the tree code update to council to start having conversations on, do we want to make any proposed changes to that or keep that moving as is? On November 3rd, we'll have a conversation on re-market to give council an update on where we are with the bridge and the roundabout, and then also start to explore policy discussions on the transportation standards to get direction as we start to move that one forward. November 17th, we'll we'll switch to the core area and start talking about City Hall and kind of what what we know and what we don't know on that in terms of funding and kind of delivery models and location of City Hall. And then on December 1st, we're planning to have a transit update, and then also that's where we have scheduled that first housing funding group check-in with council.
It's just Russ on this one right here. Isn't a TIF check-in going to be, did I miss it on this side?
We have not scheduled, we have, that'll probably, it could come in at the quarterly update. We're working on where we want to slot that right now. So that, but yeah, that's one that's on.
First meeting in October is not on this list.
Yeah, so we, right now, we don't, we do not have any work sessions scheduled for the first meeting in October or the second meeting in December. But this, I mean, a lot of this that you see is really just focused on transportation and growth and development. And so there's other, I'm sure there are other things that I can get scheduled, but in the two weeks ago, we sat down, we just started looking at council goals and our work session schedule and trying to figure out how to start to schedule this out. And so this is that kind of that that first layer of how that planning effort came about.
I mean, I think we do want to make sure that we're got that tip thing moving forward. If there is going to be any, you know, having a discussion about it, but just keeping it as is or changes so that it can be ready to go in 2020.
That's that's something we'll 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 work with the team and Eric to get that slotted over the next six months. Earlier rather than later, September is should be nice.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that early October meetings.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, this is councillor Franso, so. Can you guys hear me? Okay, my reception's not great.
I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm sorry, my reception's not great, so I'm not on video. I can see all the presentation that I can see your video. So just about that topic of the TIF. I'm I'm curious to hear maybe from my fellow city councillors what they're looking for in a TIF update. With the home committee solely focused on funding and financing and the TIF being a funding and financing measure. I I feel like the TIF should just be fun punted until the home committee, you know, has any comments. So I was just curious what my fellow city councillors who asked about that were intending for an update.
Just invited Matt Stewart up to kind of give an update on that.
Good evening, Councilman Matt Stewart, Real Estate Facilities. Actually, going to what councillor Franso just stated, we were considering bringing going to what councillor Franso just stated, we were considering bringing the site-specific tip for the housing portion as part of that first review with the home committee. So that's something we've been discussing. That can be vetted there along with all the other housing programs. So we have kind of this continuous look at them. So they're scheduled to meet first kickoff meeting, we're looking at in August, their first full meeting at the end of September. So as we've talked about, a check-in with council sometime around October, November regarding their work on some primary quick hits. We thought that would be a good opportunity to have that group sort of evaluate, vet as they look to other programs. Maybe we shift the site-specific TIF to tackle a very specific either A M I point or a type of point, and then we're looking at other programs to tackle others. So we kind of wanted to make sure that we were having a discussion of those power. That is preliminary, just internal discussion. We haven't quite got to that point, but that's what we're talking about internally is when we would bring that forward, so.
How do you all feel about that?
Conflicted, I would say. Um, in, in part, Matt, I guess my first question to you is, are we getting a backlog stacked up of folks who wanna get in on this program right now? Cause we said stop.
Yeah, we put a pause, so we have, we don't have a backlog per se.
But are you getting people knocking on the doors?
Uh, not necessarily knocking on doors. We've had, we've had a few actually now starting to twist to, turn towards the employment. Some of the um, the housing one, we've had some interest, but nothing of the point. They're still very much early on in their process of just sorting out their own entitlement and planning and design. So we don't really have anyone in the queue that is ready to go. This first two phases really kind of took those who've been sitting, waiting and asked for extension, their land use, we've gotten those kind of off the table. So um, I think if, if we have someone come to us pressing, I'd be more than happy to bring that forward sooner under those terms, but I, I think this gives us an opportunity.
Tactical pause is okay right now, as you're telling me. I just don't wanna miss capacity getting stuff out of the ground.
Uh, no, and I know, I'll confirm with Jonathan again, but we've kind of been, as we've sort of like put the pause on, so we think we hit all those first round of projects and then we need to kind of change it so we can make sure we're tackling the next phase that's coming in.
Yeah, and I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're um, moving forward quickly enough that we don't have too long of a pause, right?
Yeah.
That we, for projects that might be interested in, whether it's the housing side or the the um, employment side, that we're able to offer the program again quickly after some feedback and this. And it's just to remind everybody, we agreed that we would do a review after one year. Ideas to get through at least two rounds and then take a look at it. So getting input from home, cause it's good timing.
Yeah, I think we thought of it as if we wanted to get some public input, that was a group we would like to utilize, cause they're looking at it in a whole capacity. I think we brought it to Borough and asked you, what would you like to do? You'd probably kick it to us, say like, can you go get some public input first? So this, we kind of were trying to hedge our bets a little bit and use that group as some of that public input.
And on the employment side, are you waiting until you have two or three before you bring it to council?
Yeah, we've had some knocking on the door. Uh, I think he got his first formal um, application for a project in Juniper Ridge. So we're, he's working on evaluating that, but we have a couple others that they're talking to right now that we're bringing Katie Burks and Cyrus in on our economic development side. So we are starting to see that pick up some momentum and I think we're just we're gonna kind of move back and forth between the two, which is how it works.
And on the, on the, on the economic side, we'll probably bring up that if there's questions around that or just updates, I'll be at the October thirteenth meeting on the economic side.
I guess I'm okay waiting for that first check-in with the home committee, I think.
So we, as staff, we will, we'll continue to work with, with Matt and the team and then see if there's something that's pressing and there's opportunities. Yes, we'll, we'll start to bring those forward and see if there's interest in council to, to move faster.
I think if we have a major project come through, you'll hear from us sooner.
Yeah, I guess my hard stop on the program right now is not very, not very firm. If there's something exciting, let's talk about it.
One more question on that. Um, I'm, I'm interested in knowing, you know, the projects that have been approved, um, are the, what is the status of those? And you don't need to answer right now. I think I'm fine with a follow-up by email. But um, maybe one quick question for you while you're here is, is there, so all those projects that we approved, there's, is there another council action that will be taken on those to actually create the TIF? Or no, the TIF is created and, you know, staff and those projects can move forward as soon as the projects break ground.
Yeah, so the, the first phase projects that created a new TIP district, they have already, that plan is in adoption. We're moving forward with recording that plan with the assessor. There's no further action for council with those. There is further action from Borough with those with the development agreement. So we have a, we're kind of trying to shift Borough to more of a quarterly for updates. We meet quarterly. So we're sort of stacking for the September meeting. We have a, we're trying to look at having a big Borough meeting where we're bringing significant, many of those development agreements back to council, or I'm sorry, to Borough to review and approve those development agreements with their, um. The second phase, which is uh, Borough's gonna cure tonight around Project Emblem. That one will come back in August, Sept- well, sorry, go, if, if Borough proves it tonight, it'll go through its forty-five day consultant confer period. It'll come back to council in uh, late September to be either considered for adoption. So that one will have the further council action. The other ones will have action around the actual development agreement with Borough only.
So that's to go through the planning commission, right?
That one emblem does, correct.
So, and I just, Jonathan, I think one of them's actually moved, one of those projects is moving into construction right now. What, what we can do, and I'll work with Stephanie and Eric is we'll, we'll, on the projects that got approved, we can provide updates either through Eric at a council meeting or through the, the weekly memo. Um, when we get, when we get good information on that to keep everybody in the loop on what's going on.
Awesome. Yeah, city manager report update's fine with me. I don't, doesn't need to be on the agenda necessarily. Thanks.
And the one thing I don't wanna lose track of as well is, is Jewel gets another, a sort of a further right, uh, discussion. And so they gotta be in here somewhere.
Correct. So we're, we're working behind the scenes with Jewel as they kind of work through, they, they didn't have land use approval. So we're kind of working, wait for them to kind of go through their land use approval process. That'll sort of vet out the project. When we have the fully vetted out project, what we'll end up doing is we'll probably bring the amendment to the courier plan with the development agreement all at the same time. So we'll kind of stack that one up just so we're in line with that we know it's, cause that's the only one that didn't kind of have that land use approval.
That likely to be September.
Our hope is, is either it's September or it could be a little bit later just based on their projected form, but there's no date necessarily set for that one.
Thank you. All right.
I still have other. Oh, there's the question slide. Perfect. Is it, may I ask questions? Is that fine? Did someone else have there?
Sure, we do have to move on um, relatively soon. We've got a pretty fast, but go ahead.
Great. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a lot of information. Um, I just, I know Eric's not here and Eric determines our, you know, um, council agenda review meetings, but you know, getting this information in advance would help me, you know, get my questions answered before these meetings happen. Um, but one, you know, um, so I've got, I have so many questions. Um, you know, we have, I'll start with this slide that's up here. So the transportation C I P funding discussion that's on the agenda for September twenty-ninth. You know, I'd really like that to see that, it, I really like to see that in the community building subcommittee meeting for a preview before it comes to the full council. That's a, it's a huge conversation. Um, and so I think that needs to be teed up prior and, and some prep happening there prior. So that, I guess that's just feedback. That's not really a question so much. Um, uh, one question I have about, you know, there's a lot of talk about all the master plans that we're supporting around the community, which is really great, but we all know that it takes about five years for a project that's so massive that it needs to go through a master plan till the day when it breaks ground even, um, to actually think about start building houses. So, you know, I'm curious, like, what are, what is the progress that's been made to support the more rapid, you know, rapidly deployable um, kind of projects like infill housing, um. And if you have any sort of statistics and numbers around that.
We do, and actually I'd push everyone, I would, I would say, go look at the housing data hub that we have out there. That shows our housing production, which has been you know, I would say in the current economic times, we, we're kind of holding level, but if you go, we have a middle housing um, page on that and shows a significant uptick in middle housing over, I would say, the past three years. From the kind of the policy work that council's done as well as kind of actions at the state. We're really starting to see an uptick and all that data's on that, that, that hub on that housing hub. And we can come back at some point too and give a greater update on housing. Cause we, we do track that very closely.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, talk about the C I P um, question. To be honest with you, I think it actually needs to be a full council discussion. I think part of the challenge has been that we need to get the whole team, all seven of us on as much as we can on the same page about this stuff and prioritization. And I'm not sure subcommittee discussion of substance, if it goes contrary to where the rest of the group is going, we all need to hear the same information on this stuff and it's been part of our problem to some extent. And I, I think that's what we're trying to do, as I understand it, through these discussions in the fall, is to get us better aligned. And we get out of weeds a little bit after that, right? And keep these projects moving. So um, knowing we will, of course, to get back in the weeds. That's partly what we do, but um, but I, so I don't want it actually in the subcommittee. Want it to be, either have a longer work session or two works that are something.
There probably be multiples. We probably come back. We don't, there, there are some things that we wanna make sure and we'll list these out in terms of like, we need, we need, there's projects that we need critical direction on, like Franklin's a good one, right?
Yeah.
And there's other ones that will be, we've got more time to figure that out and we can come back after the first of the year or another work session to talk about it. Really, we wanna spend that two hours kind of framing everything up. And yeah, I agree with you. We may not get through everything in one work session. But just to make sure that our, our projects that are kind of in the queue right now, they have clear direction that we, we can keep moving. And then we have a whole nother wave of the next round of projects. We wanna make sure we prioritize that we can at least start answering questions from council and/or start developing scopes of work that start to move through the process.
I, and I, I agree with councillor Franso, so this is, this is meaty. And so whatever we can do to prepare ourselves for that two-hour discussion and however far in advance that we can receive that information so that we can we can marinate on a little bit.
And that was the purpose of giving this presentation. It was to get this, we're not asking for anything right now. It's just to get this information out. They're saying this is our current plan. We've got, we're, you know, it takes a lot of work to bring these conversations forward. So as staff, we're starting to develop kind of what we're gonna be talking about, how we're gonna present this information.
And as we committed to about a month ago, we will provide more in-depth upcoming agenda previews in the city manager report that will focus in on council goals. And we'll try and annotate those in a way so that you under, so it's easy to understand exactly what we'll be talking about at each of those meetings.
All right.
Thank you. One more, so just one more bit of, this is just feedback. We don't have to talk about this right now, but like I, I appreciate, you know, all this, the, basically all the slides are accomplishments and it's a lot of hard work. I know a lot of people have worked really hard on all this stuff, but I think, you know, as city councillors, you, we have to respond to the public and what the public is always asking about, what I'm always noticing is really more, you know, outcomes in our community. And so like the hard work that the city does, if it's not resulting in the changes on the ground that our community is relying on us to deliver, you know, then it's, um, then I have to wonder, like, are we putting our time in the right places? And so the, so for future presentations, maybe something that you guys can think about and I'm happy to talk further about is, you know, what are the outcomes that we're seeing for all the actions that we're taking? You know, are we seeing reduced um, accidents on roads and reduced injuries and reduced deaths? Are we seeing prices in housing going down? Are we seeing more affordable housing options? You know, um, being built or available in the marketplace, like et cetera, et cetera. So, um, that's just, that's just something that strikes me as I kind of look at all these, um, yeah, at all the information that has been presented in the past twenty minutes, thirty minutes.
Move on, and I would disagree with your generalization. Um, and I think a lot of the work that we are doing in the community is resulting in some um, really significant positive changes. Um, okay, now we're gonna move.
That's great, but it, like I'm saying in the presentations, if that can be shared, that would be helpful. Yeah.
Next up is Brian. I didn't talk about the growth.
One moment. When I bounced in there, oh, one second, we need to share. And we will share my screen. Diamond screen. That's great. Share, gotcha. Okay, how are we doing? That's just the bottom half of my son's face. I apologize there. That um, councillor Platt graduated this year. Thank you for your wonderful speech. I appreciate that. My pleasure. Thanks and honor. That's the most philosophical physics teacher uh, speech I have ever, it was excellent.
Newton's laws don't get enough play out there. So I'm glad that Newton could get a little credit.
So I just, I wanna create just a little, like a little bit of a break here between a very dense presentation because um, first of all, you're not asked to make any decisions tonight. This is just a learning opportunity, a discussion. And really to contextualize the project that we're gonna be talking about in the growth plan. And I was thinking beforehand, just to kind of create a little space between the last set of images and slides and bullet points in this, it's just to share a little story. Um, the growth plan is very similar to a project that was run. And we're gonna talk about that, but it was approved in twenty sixteen. A lot of people know it as the U G B project, but there was a lot more involved to that. And we were, um, we were doing a pop-up event. And that pop-up event was out at Mountain View High School. And an older gentleman uh, came up to me during this event as I'm standing next to him, aff, and he was clearly agitated. He was very agitated. He was very concerned. And he came walking up to me and he said, you know, my wife and I, we retired on our piece of property. I don't want any U G B at all. But I'm right next to the northeast edge of this thing and I'm gonna look at it. And I'm really concerned. My wife and I are older, I'm about eighty-three, eighty-four years old, something in that range. And I'm really concerned about what this is gonna mean, cause I moved away from the city, not closer to the city. Now the city's coming out to me. And I said, okay, well, let's, let's talk about this for a second. First off, we're not done with this. This could get appealed. If it gets appealed, that could take a year or two. Once it gets done, a landowner is gonna have to purchase and assemble these properties. And then that's gonna take a year, two or three. And then after that, they'll have to do a master planning process. That master planning process will take a year, maybe two. And then once they get an approval, if they get an approval, then they have to build their infrastructure. And once they start that infrastructure, then they'll start building housing and they'll probably build it for where the city is, out east, which is where he lives. And he looked at me and he said, so what you're telling me is that I could be dead. I could be dead. And I said, sir, no, I don't want you dead. We want you here. But this is a, this is a critical point, is that this work is, it's at a different time scale than a lot of your issues. And this work, in many respects, I think is generational work. And this council has that opportunity to guide that generational work. It's not for folks that are kind of even my age and that kind of A A R P notification and sign up for A R P. It's in that, it's in, it's, it's your high school students, right? And so when we're talking about this project and, and just contextualizing it, um, I just wanna share that with you, because I think that's so important to know before you begin in the journey. So we're gonna talk about our next growth plan. I'm gonna cover a couple of subjects tonight. We're gonna cover, um, we're gonna cover some of the, the, the history. We're gonna cover kind of the impact. We're gonna cover really some of the work that the council's been doing currently that is actually related to advancing the growth plan. We'll talk about the elements of growth plan and we're gonna end on a slide that's a little bit more technical. Um, and this is really the big question, right? How's Ben gonna grow? And so this is on the, the hearts and minds of people in our community, fully aware of that. Um, and that this is really a chance and the growth plan is a chance to set that clear policy direction to provide that answer about how we're going to grow in the future. Um, and it takes all of us. I think that's another message. It's gonna take the council, it's gonna take all agencies, it's gonna take all people to get involved and create this plan for our future. Uh, while, here's the trick, meeting the state's laws and requirements. And so this slide is the most technical slide that you'll see tonight. I am flashing it now because we're gonna end on it later at the very end. And so at this point, I just wanna explain a couple of things that I think you can keep in mind as you're listening to this discussion, which is, this is a multi-year project. It'll start next year. It'll end in twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, depending on some council actions. And there's a lot more to talk about in terms of timing. That throughout this entirety of the project, you're going to be integrating engagement and equity into all the, what are the deliverables that you see listed there? All, these are all the Oregon acronyms of the things that the council will be adopting. These will all be amendments to our comprehensive plan. These are legislative applications. These are all amendments and ends up as shifting policy. So this is all about changing policy more than changing code. Um, these types of amendments will be adopted in packages. First package will be focused on land need. How much land do we need to support our economy? How much land do we, do we need for housing? What kind of types, affordability, location? That's kind of the first phase of that work. We're not gonna resolve what we do with the additional need and we do anticipate having additional need for land in some form or fashion. That's package two. Package two is where we start to understand, okay, here are our options. And essentially, we're growing up. We're growing out and very likely a combination of the two. Um, that's the point where we're gonna be adopting our climate-friendly areas. Um, and that's where we start to assess if we are growing out, do we expand our U G B? If so, how does it look? Where? Um, we get that adopted by the council and then that's completed. We get that adopted by the council and then that's completed. And then the third package, while it looks like transportation is separate, it will be adopted after the first two packages. But the requirements for the transportation planning rule and require, and those requirements associated with getting a TSP or transportation system plan done are incorporated from the very beginning of the project. We always have to be aware of how this land use plan will affect transportation. So if you were to go down to the old mill a hundred or so years ago, this is what you would have seen. The entire economy of Bend was wrapped around the mills and the fate of the mills. I remember reading a bulletin article at the time because I went to the Deschutes Historical Museum. A couple of articles are really interesting. One was the Affordable Housing Crisis at the time these mills were operating because of the rate of population growth and the lack of supply of housing. And the other was, it was a little bit more humorous to me was, are you familiar with the Deschutes Historical Museum? It's the old Reed School. There was an article I ran to it and the residents of Bend were complaining because it was too far out of town at the time. Right? And so this is how Ben started in many ways, but as you know, over time, due to external factors and external conditions, conditions changed, resulting in shutdown of the lumber industry and then the mills eventually shut down as well. This picture of the old mill was taken in nineteen ninety. It shows the three smoke stacks. And this also represents what I would call industrial land policy. At the time of this picture, this was zoned for industrial uses. Can you imagine that now? Just think about that. Um, so there was this guy named Bill Smith who decided, you know, I, I have a different vision. And this different vision had Bill Smith working, he used to say a story, it was like four years, twenty-one days and six hours till I got the approval of a city council at the time to change the policy to get to this vision. So the city council at the time believed that, but this picture is taken thirty years later. So two points, one is that it takes time for these changes to occur in built environments. Um, number two is that if you go down to the old mill, the way they managed, the incredible focus on implementation and down to the detailed implementation is what has resulted in that kind of facility, uh, and being such a great community amenity for all of us. In twenty sixteen, the city council at that time said, you know, okay, we're going to do this whole land plan thing. We're going to grow up and we're going to grow out. They, they adopted opportunity areas where you could do vertical mixed use and they expanded the UGB. This is a picture of land that was developed under the old industrial zoning. And at the time, um, I enjoyed going to one of these businesses. You probably recognize it as Spoken Moto, but this is that picture of an aerial of Spoken Moto. And now, as you know, this type of vertical mixture, six-story is taking shape in that place. And, and this is roughly, it's about what, nine, about eight, nine years later, right? Where this is finally taking shape. Another example of how that takes time, but can be transformative. And it wasn't just infill, it was also our urban growth boundary expansions. And this photo shows the Petrosa development and housing units in the foreground and then looking out at fields and the mountains in the back. And this is an example of how we also expanded to meet our housing supply and it, and just sum up the results of that in that decade, what happened as a result of that big policy shift and a focus on implementation is that the housing mix has become more diverse. There's more middle housing that's being constructed now than before this policy shift. In addition, densities are higher. And we also, now that we have this kind of capacity inside of our urban growth, we still have capacity in those, those UGB expansion areas that were created in twenty sixteen. I think we've built around a thousand or so units and about five thousand plus are entitled, ready to go on master plan out of the total capacity that we assumed around eight thousand. Another example of how policy changes place. But to get to those results, it was not all, Mike Riley is smiling, Councilor Riley is smiling. It wasn't all fun and games. Do you, do you all remember this moment in Bend? I just want to ask. This, this is really interesting. This is a little trip down memory lane. Um, staff started working on the, the prior UGB expansion that is shown here. So there's two, was, there's a graphic that shows the UGB expansion that was proposed in two thousand nine. And then there's some statistics. In two thousand nine, there was a UGB proposal for over eighty-five hundred acres. The council said, go big, let's not do infill as much as focus on an expansion. That didn't sit well with a number of our community members. Eleven of them appealed that decision to the Department of Land Conservation Development. We spent two years in essentially legal proceedings with the Land Conservation Development Commission before we got a remand order. That remand order was a hundred and fifty pages. And it told us how to basically redo major portions of that. We picked it up and then we invested. So that two million dollars, so that was darn near, this is like almost a decade-long project. And then the city council in about twenty fourteen said, you know, let's invest in consulting assistance to do this. Number one, hundreds of thousands of hours of staff time and beyond that in community time we're spent on this until we got to twenty sixteen, when we finally got this thing approved. Then why, and what, what, what was different, right? Number one, the use of consultants to help us because of the technical nature, the legal nature and the complexity of the project. But two, it was essentially bringing people into the process, in my opinion. Um, it was really getting people together to have conversations about the fate of Bend. This is a photograph that shows, uh, essentially a tabling exercise of people around it. If you know the people, you'd know that they don't all agree. They don't always see eye to eye. Um, you have counselors, you have different members of the community coming together to figure out, hey, where should the, where should the UGB, the urban growth boundary be placed? And we pull it all together. We did analysis and we, we, we move forward. But this is so critical is getting the people with different opinions at the table and listening and responding and working with them through time is such a critical ingredient in the success of a project like this. So what happens? Okay, we didn't just stop in twenty sixteen. And I think the answer is very simple, implementation. So in twenty, about twenty seventeen, the city, uh, the city council said, go do a couple of things. One, this, it was through a return on investment study, go do the bends, the, the bend, uh, there's so many plans. I just literally just basically Southeast area plan and core area plan and form the, the Tiff district. Uh, the tax incentive financing district in the core. And so the reason after we took a look at it, we said, well, we have a vision for the Ben Central District. And this is a photo that shows mixed use buildings, people walking around, it's comfortable, it's safe, it's, it's a mixed use place that is in policy, but hasn't quite shifted yet. But this council, and looking at this photo, and looking south on Second Street as an aerial is showing an area that is beginning to show that promise. So this council saying, let's focus on the Hawthorne Bridge, Second Street, Franklin, Greenwood and Ben Bike Ways connections. So those implementation actions are taking completely consistent with policy, but also advancing the next round of policy. If you look to UGB expansion areas or Southeast area plan, it did the same. It said, look, we have capacity for three thousand jobs, twelve hundred housing units out here. Hey, we need some help down there. This council, you are going to be looking at these supplemental SDCs to help reimburse for the cost of this forest main that is being constructed by the city. But the point, another point of this slide, because if you're looking at it, you're looking an aerial over Caldera. And as you know, out in the distance, there is a new library. And north you have Alpenglow Park. The, the plan that you will be creating for a growth plan will incorporate the land needs for schools and for parks, some cases libraries as well. Any urban growth boundary expansion also requires the approval of the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners. So in essence, there is a really big effort to pull all the agencies as well as the people in the interest together because we need each other in this kind of process and plan. And lastly, infrastructure. After the UGB, uh, was, was approved in twenty sixteen, we, and we had all these infill and expansion areas. Wow. Um, we need to update all of our public facility plans. Counselors have, council has done that over the years. You have a collection system master plan coming up. Incredibly critical to understand what's the status of our current sewer system so that we can use that to change the land use designations. Once you do that, then you update those public facility plans again. And when you do so, you're committing to hundreds of millions of dollars in public infrastructure. So, and lastly, transportation is another big one. The tw- twenty twenty transportation system plan led to the bond and this council is really focusing on how to implement those bond projects. And from my observations on the outside and not working with you directly, it's how do we focus on more bicycle and pedestrian access, better access, safety? And that is an entirely consistent direction with the status of the new rules that will govern the next update to the transportation systems plan. So I think the issues that you're working through now that are difficult, um, those are really good learning opportunities. Because we're going to carry those into this growth plan and the update of the transportation systems plan. So what has changed since the twenty sixteen growth plan? In essence, we have two new rules. Um, and these, it's really hard to get graphics for rules, by the way. So on the left you'll see, uh, it's a, it's a snapshot of an article that was written on the climate friendly and equitable communities rules. And then on the right, you will see a graphic that's, that is trying to describe the Oregon Housing Needs Assessment. And so these are two different new bodies of state law that are totally different than when we did this work in twenty sixteen, twenty fourteen, sixteen. And in a nutshell, both of these are highly focused on, first of all, equity and more equitable outcomes across the community. They're focused on making sure that we identify these areas and that we're working to remedy any differences in the outcomes and improving the outcomes of folks that are living in these areas that are underserved, historically underserved, and folks that have been underrepresented in the process. With ONA, with the Oregon Housing Needs Assessment, it's really about, hey, what are, they're giving, the state's giving us housing targets by affordability levels. And we have production targets. This is a very different world. And in both of these cases, both of these laws require constant tracking. And so monitoring progress over time. And I think a commonality between the two, this image shows a pop-up event that we held to try to do our best as staff to get out and reach people instead of asking them to come to City Hall on a beautiful night. And in order to engage and get that input, you really have to go out to people as much or more than waiting for them to come to you. And so in this part, this process and the growth plan is really going to be focused on doing our best experimenting and giving it our best shot to get out into the community, try new ways to get input into the process. And then how's this work going to get done? Well, you've already started. Um, on the left you see a graphic of the climate friendly areas map from our study that the last council approved. The map shows three areas in red. Those red areas are planned, or at least were just kind of tentatively planned for primary climate friendly areas, more dense, more walkable areas. One on the west side, one in the central, one on the east side. You've already, so you've already essentially started. This project will then create the designations for those climate friendly areas. And in addition, all those rules that apply will be, will be pulled into our analysis of land use so that these things are synced up. And then in, in the bottom corner, you'll see a conceptual plan for the one-time UGB expansion. You have approved moving forward with that. That will be helpful in moving forward because part of the requirements for the Oregon Housing Needs Assessment is to provide certain numbers of housing at certain affordability targets and for us to be precise about that. So this is going to be part of that supply of housing that we're going to count on in the next growth plan. But the big elements are really around housing. So we start with housing. Housing is a key feature. Uh, we have to determine what is our capacity for housing inside of our current urban growth boundary? And what is our capacity for employment in that current urban growth boundary? That's called the billable lands inventory. Next step, we have to do a contextualized housing need to figure out the types, locations and characteristics of housing that are needed. That's another deliverable of the project and work on the, what's called the housing capacity analysis. And that is to say, well, how much capacity do we have in our urban growth boundary? And then what do we need to meet our twenty-year demand for housing? The next piece is around employment. You have already approved your sector targeting analysis. Excellent work. And now also on to the economic development strategy. Those are great pieces of work that feed into the employment opportunities analysis. That analysis is what will determine the need for sites, for land, the characteristics of land, where should it be? So how do we keep our economy competitive? According to some of those targeted sectors and other sectors that are just naturally here and we need to support in Bend. So that is an important feature of the work. Um, and then transportation is another big, big component. And that component is really around at the end of the project, adopting a transportation systems plan. As I said before, we're doing the land use work and figuring out how to accommodate that need, evaluating what could grow up, how we can grow out within the context of meeting the rules in Division twelve that regulate transportation planning. And then ultimately we'll adopt a transportation systems plan, which will have a, a new project list. So it's a chance for this council to really put their mark on what that future transportation system plan will be and then how to fund it. And then I would call this kind of a, there, there's also this opportunity to do more than just what I would say, the regulatory drivers, the main regulatory drivers. You have your own goals on complete communities. Those are entirely consistent with Division twelve transportation rules. Um, so we're going to really lean into that. But there are other issues as well, such as wildfire resilience, climate resilience. What about access to nature and open space? So there are other subjects that need to come together as well to create these vibrant livable places in this photo here of downtown at the farmer's market. And, and really what I've talked about tonight are individual, they're individual threads, they're individual subjects. However, it's really important and critical that we tie them all together into a cohesive whole. We absolutely have to have a plan that meets your policy objectives, the community's desires and state law by the end. So that's our intention with the growth plan. And now let's settle back on this graphic of all of the deliverables and open it up for your discussion. But before that, quick note, something that's, uh, kind of Ian, Ian had asked me to touch on this is that to my knowledge is the first time that this will have been done in Oregon. So no other community that I'm aware of is either, uh, foolhardy enough to do it. Needs crazy enough, uh, or needs to do it, uh, in this particular way. So we are under deadlines to meet certain regulatory obligations. We have to have certain things adopted by certain dates. This, this timeline has been created in this approach to hit those deadlines. But at the same time, this is predicated on, uh, I think our understanding of rules, which is there's so much land use that's embedded in the new transportation rules that it, it's really hard to meet the transportation requirements unless you use land use to assist you in doing so. So these two things are not separated. Um, and so this approach is trying to integrate those requirements. I think I've gone through the acronyms. Uh, I think another thing to just add is that some of these, even though there are three packages, there are a couple of things and in a darker shading, you'll see a contextualized housing need, housing production strategy. Those are going to be dealt with during that phase of work. However, they're separate adoptions. That's what the color, you look at the colors and you go, why is that a different color? Because you have to adopt it by resolution instead of by ordinance. So again, package one, focusing on land need, what's our capacity? Package two, what do we do with the additional need that we're likely to find? Package three, at the end, we're going to adopt a transportation systems plan, but carry transportation through from the beginning to the close of the project.
So I'll just step in here regarding, we, if council has questions around this, we're more than happy to stay on this topic. We, we have the ability, we can, we have one more item, which is the Ben Bike Ways. We can move that to another meeting. There's nothing pressing on that. That was just more of an update.
I can come back to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's, it's council's kind of choice on how you like to proceed.
You do have a pretty meaty exec session. So, um, what do you all think? Would you like to ask questions for a few minutes on, on the growth plan or quickly switch over to Ben Bike Ways?
I'd like to get to bike ways, if we can, I mean, but there will be plenty more opportunities along the way to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have months. We will have years.
I, I need to get this started. I think as part of what you showed is that we need to start it sooner rather than later so that we can make sure that we're having stuff show up on the ground and, uh, not too long of a timeframe. And I think having been part of both the UGB expansion process that Brian referred to and and in the TSP stuff, I mean, we are really starting to see now, just these last couple of years, a lot of stuff really show up. And, um, in positive ways, it reflects all that hard work, but it still boggles my mind how long it takes. And it is one of the obstacles that we have and we hear about, even from our former president Obama quite recently about how we need to move faster at the local level, which was a little, I didn't like.
I'm here about our number.
For perspective, anyway. It took four years from the twenty sixteen UGB approval to the first house closing in an expansion area.
Yeah, I mean, it's really quite mind-boggling. So I'm excited to get started. Like, and we get, let's go.
So let me just share a quick next step. So quick next step, we're working on the request for proposal. We get that into procurement. There's an, there, as you know, that takes months to resolve that. We hope to start and have a consultant onboard by the first of the year, if not sooner. After that, then we begin the project. One of the first kind of kickoff moments will be with the council to get high level direction, have a policy discussion to help guide the project. And then we can begin that more. And then we can begin that more, I would say, the public outreach phase. So that is what's anticipated. The next thing that would be before you, if not another kind of Q and A, let's just bring Brian in and just ask questions, which I'm happy to do, would be a contract approval. And we would expect that by the end of the year.
The consultant is doing what exactly?
The consultant is going to be doing quite a bit.
Consultants plural.
Yeah, more than likely, this will be a team, first of all. So a lot of this work requires a couple of things. First of all, on the transportation side, transportation modeling, use of the travel demand model. Those things are important as well as just being able to do a transportation systems plan in general. We hired a team to, on the land use side, you're doing transportation or land use modeling pro forma tools. So you're kind of understanding, hey, if we make this change, is it going to work in the market, for example? Public engagement to help us on the public engagement front. In particular, like we're asking in this RFP for some new tools that we can use to engage the public. How do we engage the public in a better manner? And how do we communicate better with the public on this process? So we can drive people to the project and have them provide an impact. So yeah, there are a whole variety of other services. We can, we can take a look at the RFP and I'm happy to share.
Hey, Brian, this is Counselor Franzosa. I keep raising my hand, but so I'm nosing in because I don't know that people see it. Um, I have a couple of questions. One is how are you incorporating council's previously adopted policies into this? So for example, I'm thinking about our climate action policy and our emissions reduction policy. I'm thinking about our goal to reduce per capita water use. I'm thinking about, you mentioned complete neighborhoods. We have safe streets. You know, goals. So how is that incorporated into the RFP specifically and, and into your process for selecting a contractor to do this? And then secondly, very specifically, you know, we have this, it used to be called the Local Contracts Review Board. There was a conflict sort of with policy with that. So now it's called the Public Contracts Board. It's a committee, it's a committee, a subcommittee of council, and it hasn't met in a while. And I'm curious if this RFP will be brought to that subcommittee for, you know, a little study before it's issued or if it's just going to go out.
I do not know. Let's cover, Counselor, thank you. I, let me cover the last question first. Which is, I'm not entirely sure of the exact process that we'll use for the procurement process for this. I assume it would, would be similar to other ones, but let, let me get back to you because I don't have the exact answer right now. We're still in the early formation of the request for proposals. So it requires staff review. We put it in. And it's not near going public yet because typically that's a couple of month process. So we're not anywhere close to where we have to make that decision today. And we'll, we can certainly talk to you or talk to the council about that. And I think this is a unique project that is worthy of public discussion. So when we get to that point, I'm happy to share and provide any information that the council would like. Your first question on council goals, your council goals in and of themselves are not regulatory. So they're not adopted in our comprehensive plan. They technically do not, they're not a legal criteria for the approval or not. However, your counselors, you're going to be involved in shaping this project throughout. And in this, in this process, something I didn't mention before is not relying as much on technical advisory committees or advisory committees, trying to pull public engagement in. So you as a council know, this is what, this is what they're hearing on this. This is what we can see. Here's some data points. And for the council itself to provide the guidance in the project. So I think your values, your policy positions clearly are going to express themselves throughout this work.
Right.
Thank you.
Many more conversations on this as we kind of transition to the Ben Bike Ways, just from a time, I want to thank Brian for, for his work. If we can't do it, it's, it's okay. I'm, I'm from, I'm, I'm fine.
What I struggle with is doing a, a presentation that we don't have a time to respond.
Right.
Um, I think it's important. I think there's a lot of feedback, I'm guessing, we want to hear. So maybe we could push it if that's so we can have a more robust conversation.
Yeah, just in closing on Brian's kind of work plan and growth plan, just so council to know, and Brian won't say this, but I will, we're, we're seen as leaders in the state in doing this. If you look around town, we've been very successful and it's, it takes the entire organization in support of what the growth management team does to do this, but we have a very good track record of turning planning and policy documents into reality in the field. And this process is, as Brian kind of alluded, is, it's now a whole new generation of conversations and things we're going to have to deal with. But the team's already been working really hard, not only internally, but with the state to figure out these rules. We're way ahead of other cities in this. In fact, we're kind of leaders and figuring out the climate friendly rules and things like that. And so we've, I just want to make for council to be aware of, we've, we've got a very good pattern of practice of kind of figuring out how to work our way through this. And then, and most importantly, get that turned into reality on the ground to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve through the conference plan.
Yeah, I tell Brian and I tell you Russ, this looks a lot like a campaign plan to me. And it's something that not a, not a, not a political campaign, but my other, my military campaign plan and where it's nested and all these things that rely on one another. And so I'm very comfortable with that. It makes a lot of sense to me. So that's why I'm, I'm real excited to get started in it.
Right. I'm going to read this. We're going to go into the executive session. The Ben City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to RS 182.6602 to conduct deliberations with FERC designated to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, except for those relating to labor negotiations. Which says, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except the state and generals. Subject of the session as previously announced, no decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and we will be back at seven o'clock.
I will call this, uh, Ben City Council Business, uh, Session into, uh, Session into Session. Okay, she is present online. All right, we have, for good at the order, we have a whole bunch of stuff today. Um, we'll start with Committee Updates. Stephanie, are you leading that off?
Certainly, there are two, um, Subcommittee Meetings scheduled. The Stewardship Subcommittee is scheduled for July 31st and will focus on the Water Reclamation. The Stewardship Subcommittee is scheduled for July thirty first and will focus on the Water Reclamation Facility Facility Plan update. And we are still looking for a date in August to confirm for the Community Building Subcommittee. That agenda will include a Collections to Master Plan update, Bend Traffic Safety Action Plan, and Private Development Engineering Review update.
And under letters, we have a letter of support that was, that you can see attached to the agenda, signed by the mayor in support of APEC, which APEC, which is the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition Harmony Series. If there's any comments or questions about that. Okay, great. But we have no appointments. We will start with councillor reports. Councillor Frantosa, are you on right now for, to give any reports?
I'm here, yeah, I can give a report. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. I attended a bunch of events actually since the last meeting, it's been a few weeks. I went to, not required, but a social gathering with Partners for Affordable Housing in Yimby in late June, also the Southern Crossing Block Party, Southern Crossing Neighborhood District, which is my neighborhood district that I'm liaison for. We had a Community Building Subcommittee on Monday, June twenty third, where we had a really great, we tacked on, and I appreciate my fellow Community Building Subcommittee members for agreeing to tack on a engagement meeting with neighbors and business owners on the Galveston Project. I thought that was really productive and I think that allowed that project to move forward maybe more quickly than it otherwise would have. So I appreciate that. We had a Core Area Advisory Board meeting in June. And I also attended the Project Completion Celebration of Second Street, which is a major core area investment on June twenty fourth, which was really well attended by the public, so I appreciate everyone who showed up for that. And I'm scrolling through my calendar here. And I think that actually about rounds it up, so I'll just, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Great, Councillor Mendez?
Yeah, June twentieth, the Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board met and we continued to fine tune changes to the bylaws and the intergovernmental agreement that founds the organization. Mostly those changes are focused on adding Transit Representative as a voting member and reducing the number of City of Bend members from three to two, so that the result will be a five-member policy board with two representatives from the City of Bend, one from Deshues County, one from ODOT, and one from Cascade's East Transit. On June twenty third, as Councillor Frantosa mentioned, the Community Building Subcommittee met. We talked about the Stormwater Master Plan and spent a lot of time talking about Galveston, and I just wanted to add that I think the big takeaway on Galveston is this is going to be a really big step forward for safety for relatively not a lot of money and with minimal impact on businesses and travelers in the corridor. So I think that's all really great news. June twenty sixth, the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee met. There was an extended conversation about the new fare system that is coming to Cascade's East Transit. If you have questions about that, I encourage you to visit the Cascade's Transit website. They are still accepting feedback and the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council has not yet voted on the final fare schedule. But I sense that there's, there's a lot of worry and concern about, these are potentially big changes, but the goal is better service with minimal impact on the people that can afford it the least and the people that really rely on this system. The other thing that came out of that conversation that I thought I wanted to bring to your attention was, there was a presentation, presentation about vehicles for higher operating licenses. So the city requires that companies that provide essentially different forms of taxi service be licensed, and one of the provisions of that license is that they abide by all applicable laws. But the issue is that if you are someone who uses something like a motorized wheelchair, you may not be able to get service because the city does not require that the licensees provide that service. That issue is an area that is regulated by federal law, so this is an area that I feel like, I don't think that anybody wants to leave anyone without options for mobility. And it's an area that I hope that we can look into a little bit more. The last thing I wanted to add is I'm grateful to the wildfire fighters who are battling the cram fire. Last I checked, it was at sixty-four thousand acres. For us here in Bend, this means poor air quality, and this is a reminder to close your windows, filter your air, consider wearing a mask if you're outdoors and very poor air quality. And the last item is, I just wanted to express sympathy for the Oregon Department of Transportation workers that are, that have been laid off and are currently being laid off as a result of the legislature's lack of transportation funding package. These are people who are good at their jobs. This represents a significant workforce shift that is unfortunately going to result in less services and operations available for the state, and it will have local impacts too, so. Just wanted to express sympathy and hopefully we can still get a fix as soon as we can. That's all.
To add on something that Councillor Mendez mentioned, I'm on the COIC Board representing the City of Bend and at the COIC Board meeting on August seventh, we will be making decisions about the CET fares, so anybody who's watching who wants to provide input, there will be a public hearing that night for the opportunities, which can also send emails to us at COIC. I'm not actually sure what address to use, so you can send them to me, amriley@bendoregon.gov about CET fares and I will forward them on to COIC. I just wanted to mention, I attended, I believe I'm going to say this right, the Piumcha Powow up at the Warm Springs Reservation. It was the weekend before the Fourth of July, I believe. Gina Frantosa was also there, Councillor Frantosa, and Ian Lighthizer came, as well as Andreas Portella and Mike Butner from various parts of the city. So it was just really fun to be there and see all the folks that had gathered and watch some of the dancing and vendors, and we actually went to the rodeo as well, which is at a whole different location and sort of a different feel from the Powow, so it was really, really fun to be there for the day. I also attended the Invest Bend meeting last week and I think we had really good turnout and a lot of really good engagement at the meeting, and this is the second of what looks like will be four meetings total, I think now, there's one more to come and then kind of a check-in meeting. So I appreciate everybody who's participating in that and ask them to continue to engage so we can get their good input to finish the process. And then I just wanted to acknowledge, in addition to what Councillor Mendez mentioned, the firefighters in Idaho who died in that horrible scene where somebody started a fire and attracted people and to come out there to put it out and then were shooting at them. And it just reminds me of the risk that public safety and firefighters and police department take every day and really appreciate all the work that they do and how they put themselves on the line for us. And for firefighters, that's not something that they expected to have to deal with and just honoring them and their families and the risks they all take every day. I think it's time for me to talk about the NSST as well. So as everybody knows, at our last meeting, I asked and the majority of council supported that we would today reconsider the package of NS, the Neighborhood Street Safety Program projects. There were three of them that we did not move forward at our June fourth meeting. As you'll recall, we did not agree in particular on two of the four projects that proposed crossing at Chamberlain and Reed Market, as well as the crossing at Century and Mammoth. And we heard a lot of public opposition in other settings via email and then in the subsequent open house that that happened after that request that I made. A lot of people showed up at that meeting and neighbors and they were very, very opposed to the current proposal for Century, the crossing at Century. So staff, I think, believe that there may be an alternative or two for the Century project in particular that addresses some of the neighbors' concerns. That's where there's been the most conflict and disagreement, I would say. And as you all know, we have to move all three projects forward or we can't move any of them forward at all. I have pushed a little bit on asking questions about Archie Briggs and can we self-perform? Can we get that up to contract? And it looks like just those, those options aren't really possible for a number of reasons. So I'm asking tonight kind of reluctantly because I do think these, these projects are needed, but that we need a little bit more time to evaluate options, in particular, in my opinion, on Century Drive, where we seem to have, I think, the least amount of support on the council and also in the community. So I think this makes a lot of sense, given what we've been hearing and the fact that there is so much opposition. So I'd like to ask for sort of head nods if that's amenable for everybody to just pause, take a little bit more time. Then one or two other things I want to say about Century Drive in particular after that.
Consensus on that plan?
Yes, I support that. Councillor Frantosa as well?
Yeah, I mean, I voted in favor of the vote. The original vote where we directed staff to take a different approach to Chamberlain and Mammoth, and I'm, I feel really good about sticking with that vote that we took a couple of meetings ago, so. Yeah, I don't, I'm not in favor of revoting right now.
And so what we're asking is that, I think in part that we will, we asking staff to come back to us with a little bit more information about options for crossings on Century Drive later this fall, so we can get ready and be prepared for a package of good projects next year that we can ideally all support and move forward. I think the comment I would make about Century is that, you know, I think what's really important is that we take a whole corridor look at the corridor between Mount Washington Drive all the way out to Skyline Ranch Road and what's needed to improve the safety there. I think what everyone has to realize, and this is, I'm speaking to myself as well, really, that 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 is no longer like an urban road on the edge of the community, it's a road that's part of our urban transportation system. And it means we need to have slower speeds, it means we need to have safe ways for people to cross. And we need really both sooner rather than later. And so I'm looking forward to getting those different options and kind of getting also the story told about what is the bigger picture on that whole corridor and the timeline for the various investments that we're going to need to improve safety and function. I just also want to observe that despite what we have heard from some of the neighbors just the other day, I was driving along that road and I witnessed a man with his dog who wanted to cross and looked very frightened. And it's, you know, it was just one more example that there are people who need to cross that road for various reasons and want to cross it, and we need to figure out a way to get them safely across. The other thing I would offer is that I think maybe we have, we're trying to fit this particular improvement, perhaps with, we're trying to apply the wrong tool, the Neighborhood Street Street Safety Programming, in terms of the scale of dollars available, and we might need to be a little bit flexible on how much money we invest there to get a better solution that works from a safety perspective, but also deals with some of the neighbors' concerns. That's what I have, thanks.
The only thing to report is just a few meetings that I attended around the Century Corridor and I just wanted to thank staff, I thought it was a very heated town hall and forum, and Ryan and Christian did a great job fielding questions. And I think it's just a reminder to everyone, we want to do the right thing, we want there to be safety. You know, the whole purpose of this is, you know, safe routes, you know, for neighbors and residents, and so good intentions, we just need to go back to, you know, look at some of these designs and make sure they work for everyone. And I will just say that there's one person out of about sixty that was from the West Ridge community and he wanted it now and he wanted it, you know, twenty years ago. And so we just need to make sure that we are having a balanced conversation when we, we talk about that, so. We'll, we'll work on that with the outreach and just encourage folks to also come over that, that really need an access that trail to get down to, to the river and other recreation trails.
How's that, Paul?
Yeah, since we last met, I had a chance to, to do ride-alongs with our first responders of our city, so with the fire and EMS, as well as the police department, and I'll tell you, we're, the city's in good hands. The things that I came away from, from that experience was a solid culture, an inclusive culture, a culture in both of those organizations that are trying to build up the young folks and, and build our capacity out over the long range and long term and with, with good retention. And all those are really wonderful things to come away from. And, you know, engaging with folks who are having bad days and, and, and keeping them safe and, and getting them to making the right choices. So it's, it's, it's really an honor to have spent some time with those, so I thank Chief Riley and Chief Grants for that opportunity. I sat in the background of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee last week. Eleven, eleven packages were brought forward and there's a lot of folks who have great ideas to, to help us improve and increase our affordable housing stock, which is just center to what all of us are focused on up here and online with Councillor Frantosa. We don't, you know, we didn't have as much money to go around to give everybody the, the help that they needed, but I think they, they made some really good recommendations to us that are going to come forward to help us allocate our limited dollars to increase that housing stock, so I'm pleased to, to see that. And I'll echo Councillor Riley's thoughts on the Invest Bend Forum that we attended. We are getting business leaders and folks who are guiding our business community for economic development to help us design what levers to pull at the city level to increase our economic growth opportunities, and that's what the outcome of this is hopefully going to be, is to tell us what can we do? There are things that are outside of our sphere of influence and our sphere of control, but there are things that we can control and let's find those things and let's move forward and make that our new goal happen as well. So that's all I have, thanks.
Great, thank you. I will say that even though we haven't met for a month, you can see that your city council has been working hard during that month. I'd like to start tonight to talk about something that happened just today, just this afternoon, there, there was a fire at Juniper Ridge today. It was contained quickly and it was with one RV, it was on county property in Juniper Ridge and wanted to take advantage of having Deputy Chief Hand, who can tell us a little bit more about the fire, and we just wanted to make sure that the public was aware.
Hi, thank you, I'm Mike Han, I'm the Operations Chief over at your fire department. So today at about two twenty-eight, we received the call for a fully involved RV in the Safe Stay area. We had, the first unit was on scene in about nine minutes, which was very helpful in limiting the fire spread. The fire did spread to some of the surrounding juniper trees and into the brush. In route, we upgraded the response, we asked for a water tender from a mutually partner and a response from our forestry partners. And we did get a lot of community cooperation with the folks that are in that area. We were able to knock down the fire and, and hold it to less than an acre. We didn't have any firefighter or civilian injuries. Unfortunately, we did lose two pets in the RV. But it was a successful stop. Some of the things that led to that were the quick response, so thank you for your support and ensuring that we're fully staffed, the community cooperation, and then the county did a really good job of limbing the juniper trees around there, so in the area where the trailer was parked, those trees were limbed. And while there was extension into those trees, it was minimal compared to if those had not been maintained.
Glad to see that those mitigation efforts are working, so thank you, thank you for being here.
Of course, thank you.
Just to share a little bit about what I've been doing, I got to, to take a tour with some city staff of Breedlove Guitars, do you know that they make Breedlove guitars? And we got to see how they make their custom guitars, which take twenty hours to make one guitar. And it's a fascinating process and they are talking about how they can start bringing the public in more to, to, to be a part of, of their facility. This morning, went to the Downtown Bend Business Association meeting and had a wonderfully positive conversation about parking, which everyone was really surprised about how positive it was. And also just learned a little bit more about the three-year plan for the DPBA and just feel really good about the partnership between the city and the downtown businesses. Also went to the Council on Aging's celebration and just, you know, just want to reiterate all the incredible work that the Council on Aging does in our community for our seniors, including, you know, providing almost lifesaving food to a lot of our seniors that are isolated. And they provided, I will never forget, they provided food to my grandmother during COVID in Sun River, and that was just a really key outlet for her. Also attended the Second Street opening, which was, was really wonderful to see the, the, that street start, you know, all these efforts for all these years start to kind of bear fruit and see the dogwood sort of be this, this gathering center for, for that area. And finally, I guess I'll just, went to Mountain View Community Development, did a sort of a series on permanent supportive housing and how, what are some models that we can, we can use in our community? And that was, that was really interesting and informative as well. Also wanted to talk about a couple of things from the Human Rights and Equity Commission meeting. One is I sent a letter from the Human Rights and Equity Commission to the Bend City Council. And the letter is about, well, first I wanted to thank the Human Rights and Equity Commission for caring so deeply about our unhoused population. They wrote us a letter, of course, about shelter funding. And now this one is about the continued displacement of people particularly living on our public lands and compassionate approaches to, to this work. And while there's no direct action for the city council, the, they're a representative from the Human Rights and Equity Commission meeting. I did ask that they could attend the coordinated Houses Response Office because these, 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 these public lands are not on, you know, often not on the city of Bend. And so maybe they could, you know, have that, we could have that conversation in that environment as well. So I wanted to thank them for that. And at our Human Rights and Equity Commission meeting, we also heard from many commissioners who fear for their safety and those in our community with the increasingly aggressive actions that we're seeing from ICE. We've also received communications from community members expressing those same fears. And I think I feel comfortable speaking for everyone on this dais when I say we can't know what that fear feels like. But we can reaffirm again our values as a city council and as a city. And those values that are that everybody is welcome at here. Everybody should feel safe and no one should have their loved ones snatched away from them without due process, simply because they are brown. We condemn the actions and tactics that are being directed by this administration in Washington. Our Latina friends and coworkers and neighbors are a vital part of the fabric of our community in Bend and in Central Oregon. And we will continue to work with our community partners and city staff to determine any actionable steps that we can take in order to provide an environment of safety and belonging. Another action that we have taken is that we have joined a lawsuit to push back against the administration, adding additional terms to some of our federal grant funding that require us to cooperate with ICE or abandon our DEI work. It's my understanding that there is a preliminary injunction in favor of cities and counties. We will continue to follow along and be a part of this lawsuit as it moves forward. And because we have heard a lot from our community about collaboration between ICE and Bend PD, the Bend Police Department does not participate in immigration investigation and enforcement activities. The Bend Police Department is bound by Oregon Sanctuary Law. And officers and staff do not and have no intention to collaborate with ICE. This is a Bend PD policy. And any information to the contrary can be reported to the Oregon Sanctuary Promise Line, which is one eight four four nine two four stay. And also could be forwarded to the city manager to take appropriate investigation action if needed. And we know that none of this feels like enough and none of this takes away the fear. And what we can do as a city government, as a city council, doesn't come close to reducing the harm that we're seeing right now from the federal government towards our Latina community. Please know that we are here to listen and take your feedback and concerns seriously. And we will move with purpose to continue to show our support and care for you here in Bend in as many ways as possible. Anyone else like to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so I want to echo everything that Mayor Proton Perkins just said. And as an immigrant myself, I want to be very clear that I condemn the tactics and what I believe is the hostility of the current administration towards immigrants and people of color. I also know that I can barely comprehend the real fear and anxiety that people feel as a privileged, privileged white male. You know, as, as Mayor Proton Perkins just said, we're doing all we can to follow our commitment to be a welcoming, inclusive and safe city and standing firm in our commitment to Oregon Sanctuary Law. And as she said, if you hear something different or observe something different, please report it to us. And the Sanctuary Promise Hotline, I'll just repeat the number again, eight four four nine two four seven eight two nine.
All right, with that, we will move to the visitors section. For those of you who have not been here before, you can see a very large clock right here that gives you two minutes to speak. You can address us on any topic, but please address us as a body, not as individuals. And any hateful or threatening language, I will give you a warning. And if that language continues, I will ask you to stop your comment. And first today, we have, I think that says Brennan.
Sorry for my handwriting. Hi, I am Brennan. I am a Bend resident and engineer in the biofuel industry as well as an organizer with Energize Bend. I was going to wish you all a happy summer, but it sounds like y'all have been hustling still. So I am glad to hear about the work that you're doing. And I'm primarily here to deliver postcards, so I don't have to buy postage for them. And I also recognize that I have come here and like parroted the same or similar talking points about electrification, how it relates to affordable housing, climate health. So I'm happy to resum those talking points, but I'm going to like do a different bit of a personal side tangent that I promise will come full circle. I was catching up with one of my buddies from college today who's working on a transmission project in rural Nevada. He's working like fourteen days a week, ten hour days, staying at an Airbnb in Vegas. And I'm very happy for him, but that sounds like a horrific work schedule. And I cannot imagine like living that far away from my community and like being in Bend and reflecting on it, like I know I've seen a lot of y'all at EMV meetups, at concerts downtown, at the rec, like getting a lift in. So it, it's just very cool to me that, I mean, we're, we're all here because I think we really care about that. And in particular, we, we care that more people are able to continue experiencing that as Bend goes forward, ten years down the road, hundred years down the road. So I guess this was just a reminder that folks, like all of your constituents who wrote in cards, like they, they really care about that. And please continue to make decisions on their behalf, especially as you think about electrification policy going forward. Thank you. And also, can I just like drop these off up front?
Yes, okay, right there.
For future, am I allowed to drop this in the mailbox without postage or is that frowned upon?
I don't know if it's going to go anywhere without postage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Good question.
All right, I'll do somebody's.
The city manager's office, that might be better.
Yeah.
Yeah, upstairs.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Gagin. Okay. That is it for in-person and online. The only person that we had signed up was Lucas. Lucas, if you'd like to speak, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. First of all, thank you, everybody, for taking the time to do this and reviewing all the work you've been doing. It's both informative and great to see the work you guys are doing. So thank you. I'm writing in or, you know, calling in just as an issue of wanting to paint certain lines in the neighborhood, in the Southern Crossing neighborhood. If you head south on ninety-seven, you can make a right onto Southeast or Southwest Truman Avenue. And then you can make another right onto Southwest Hill Street to get onto Wilson Avenue. Wilson Avenue has become a much busier corridor now. And people coming off the highway use the Truman Avenue exit and that, that turn out onto Wilson quite often. And what I've noticed as someone who lives in that neighborhood, as well as just passing by with no lines being painted, the turn onto Wilson, from Hill Street onto Wilson has become, you know, a, a one-way, three-lane of people trying to turn onto Wilson instead of people recognizing it as a two-way street. There was also a fairly major accident there. I'd say about a week, week and a half ago, which is kind of taking resources, you know, the police had to be there and kind of spend their time dealing with that rather than other things that can be helping with. And I just think as this town becomes busier and more populated, it'd be great to have some lines painted in the road to indicate that it is a two-way street. And I don't know if it is a right and left turning lane onto Wilson. But again, any indication that I think would just help with the, with the safety of the community.
Great. Thank you very much for the comment. Next up is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Did we have anybody, somebody who wanted to pull?
Did you want to pull an item?
No, it's okay. We don't have to pull it. Thanks.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is item five. This is the Continued Quasi-Dutational Public Hearing on Development Code Text Amendment to amend the Oregon State University Cascades Overlay Zone to modify the boundaries of the four campus sub-districts, amend the innovation district standards to allow increased building height and manufacturing usage without a detailed component, modify landscape standards to allow a more natural landscape, realign innovation way and clarify specific street sections. Council members, did you?
Oh. Or they're already.
They're all ready.
Yeah, sorry about that. I am going to, as an employee of OSU Cascades, I'm going to declare a conflict, an actual conflict of interest and recuse myself. Thank you.
All right, I will open the public hearing. And it looks like we have hearing.
Yes, yeah.
I know there's no presentation.
Do we need to do anything or just?
No.
So the hearing, this, the hearing, the initial advisory hearing was at the June sixth, June eighteen, I think, June eighteen. No.
April sixteenth.
That hearing was continued to a date certain, which is tonight. In the interim, OSU Cascades and representatives from the Bend Park and Recreation District have been discussing some issues between them. These are adjacent, the BPRD has a property adjacent to OSU's campus. Those discussions have been, I think, at least somewhat positive, and they've made some progress on resolving some issues as a result of, I think, forward progress in those negotiations. OSU Cascades, which is the applicant here, has requested that the hearing again be continued to August sixth. So hearing's been opened. That's where things are. I think BPRD, if they didn't actually jointly make joint in the request for another continuance, they're on board. The intention is to allow both of those entities or time to discuss some of these issues with the hope that they can have some agreement by the time the next council meeting, where this can be continued and council can actually deliberate. So the request tonight is simply that council consider continuing to August sixth.
I think we did hear from BPRD in email that they support the request from them.
All right, Arthur, is there any public comment? If not, I will close the public hearing. And ask for a motion.
I move to continue the quasi-dutational public hearing for Development Code Text Amendments to amend the OSU Cascades Overlay Zone to the August sixth, twenty twenty-five City Council Business Meeting.
Second.
By Council Platte and seconded by Council Norris, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is item six.
Council has asked to approve an amendment to the agreement with the state of Oregon for delivery of the Hawthorne Avenue pestering and bicyclist over causing project, allocating awarded state and federal grant funds to the project.
Evening, Council. Ryan Oster, Director of our Attorney Department. I'm not Garrett. He was just coming back off a well-deserved paternity leave, so he's still not quite fully engaged with us. Yeah, we got a little sleepy lately.
He's got duty. Is that what's going on right now?
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, this is a pretty simple amendment to an existing agreement we have with ODOT. I got a handful of slides just to kind of recap where we are and really going to bring up a couple other discussion points. No need for a decision on those things, but just want to bring in the council's awareness as we're going to start engaging a lot more. We have a kickoff meeting with ODOT tomorrow for Hawthorne. So again, real quick background, I think you're all very familiar with this. Midtown Crossing encompasses Greenwood, Hawthorne and Franklin. The GeoBond identified this as a key part of our future system. It told us to study all three and pick one to do. And instead, we decided to study all three and do all three. So, so here we are navigating that. Because we won some money from the, the feds for the Hawthorne Bridge, I'll go through the finances here in a little bit. But we are able to, to basically fundamentally do at least a good portion of all three of those. So there's a quick history there, been lots of touchpoints, lots of studies, lots of work. We had signed this original IGA with ODOT back in, in twenty twenty-three. And we're getting ready to kind of launch into the, the structural design of the bridge now. So in this agreement with ODOT, they have to deliver it because the city is not certified as a federal or as a, as an agency that can deliver a federally funded project. So it's going to go through ODOT as the bypass. We're still going to be asked to make most of the relevant decisions, but it does have to go through the ODOT team for design. They are going to hire the consultant, they're going to hire the contractor. And that's just the way we have to do it to utilize these federal funds. So funding to date, we've got five million dollars from the state lottery fund. Another just under a million from the Communities Pathways Grant. And then another five point seven of congression, congressionally directed spending. And this is all on top of the nearly twenty million dollars we got awarded from the federal rate. So that's all still holds true. No indication from the Federal Highway Administration that that raised grant money is at any risk at this point. So we're continuing to move forward. In table format, here it is, just to show you all the different funding sources, adding up to roughly thirty-two million. There is a small requirement of a match from the city. And this is really the, the premise of the change in the agreement is we didn't have agreements in place on all these other funding mechanisms. So we were until recently going to need to use about five to six million dollars from the GeoBond as the match to the twenty million dollar raise grant. We can actually, though, use the lottery funds as the match. So that's hugely beneficial to us. This next slide kind of breaks it out a little bit better. So the buckets of money are listed on the horizontal and the agencies are listed on the vertical there. So twenty million dollars from the raise grant, we're going to use five, roughly five million of the lottery fund as the, the required twenty percent match for that. The Oregon Communities Pathways Grant, we're going to use the little bit left over in the lottery match for the remaining fund for that grant, and then about three hundred in city contributions. And then the CDS funding, there's a thirty percent match required on that one as well. So additional city contributions on that. So this is just kind of the breakdown. This is the heart of the amendment to the IGA, just to solidify with, with ODOT how the money is going to be spent and where it's going to go. So project timeline, just to recap, everybody, where we're starting, we have a kickoff meeting tomorrow with Oregon Department of Transportation here in Region Four and KPFF, who is our design and structural engineering consultant. And we anticipate that's going to take, you know, through twenty, the rest of this year, most to twenty-six and into twenty-seven. It is important, though, that we get this money not spent, but we have to have it committed in a contract for a construction firm by the end of twenty twenty-seven. So that's kind of a hard date that, well, we have to be very cognizant of because designing one, one of these is one thing, but then actually having to go through the ODOT procurement process with DOJ and the rest of that, that's a lengthy process as well. So it's quite a bit of work to get done over the next two years to get this contract awarded for somebody to actually get this thing built. But then we anticipate construction to be hopefully beginning in twenty-seven through, through twenty-eight. I'm hoping we can have it done by the end of twenty-eight, but we'll see, depending on the intricacies of closing the parkway down at certain times and night work and, and all these other things that come into play with doing, doing something of their size.
So just be clear, there's eighteen months to get it assigned contract with the entity that's going to construct.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, it's, yeah, we got to move pretty quickly here, especially given, and nothing against anybody at ODOT, but their process just takes time.
And that's a federal requirement, right? That's being driven by the federal law.
Yeah. So we really got to get moving on the design here quick and have something we can put out to bid through ODOT soon. So.
Ryan, what are major schedule risk factors to that, to meet that eighteen-month goal?
Right-of-way is always a risk factor on both sides of where the parkway is going to land. And then the biggest one is probably BNSF, though. We're going up and over the rail there. ODOT fortunately controls the parkways, so that should be pretty easy to coordinate. But BNSF is always a big risk in, in having to coordinate with them. We were successful not very long ago in, in getting BNSF coordination done with the Murphy Bridge that we built on the south end of town. So we're hopefully going to follow that same pattern. That, that's, that's always a big unknown that we really don't have a lot of control over.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. So questions related to that. But real quick, the only other thing I wanted to throw out there is part of our discussion with ODOT tomorrow and with KPFF is how we're going to work here internally as a city part of our discussion with ODOT tomorrow and with KPFF is how we're going to work here internally as a city in terms of decisions that need to be made on a relatively rapid scale. Um, not in terms of what kind of bridge we've decided on that, but even with this cable stay bridge, the tower can have a different look or a different feel. So do you want the tower itself to look like A, B, or C? And those are the things that we're going to need to set up a system to come back to council and be able to quickly make those decisions. I don't think we're going to have time to do a robust public outreach process to, to get their opinions of, you know, what do you want the lighting to look like? What do you want the tower to look like? What do you want the, you know, the decorative pieces of this to look like? So I think we are going to need to rely on the quick coordination with council to be able to make those decisions, give that feedback to the consultant so they can move forward on their design. So, don't need to figure that out tonight, but just want to plant the seed. Um, that's going to be really important over the next year.
And just to remind everyone, we are going to be talking about Hawthorne, Franklin, and Greenwood on the fifteenth.
Larger discussion.
Larger discussion.
For midtown.
Yes.
We, we occasionally get emails asking about why this bridge design, why this location. Uh, and I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page to let people know that for a relatively small amount of city money. Um, this, this bridge is committed, the location is committed, the design is committed, the timeline, we're going to work as best as we can to meet it. Uh, so that, that ship has sailed. And, um, if, if all things go according to plan, um, construction will begin in twenty twenty-seven and, uh, hopefully we'll have a usable bridge, um, not too long after that.
Yeah, that's a great point. It's, these are going to need to be rapid decisions and the decision is final and we got to move on. We don't have time to be going back and forth and we don't want to put thirty-one million dollars at risk uh, of losing that because we're indecisive along what a tower structure needs to look like.
And we can't, you know, transfer the money to any other location.
Yeah.
This is a very specific grant from the federal government, its main driver in, is that this location? And it's not to say that there aren't valid concerns about what it connects to and what, what the rest of the corridor looks like. Absolutely, but in terms of the bridge and its location, it's, we're, we're committed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to, we hear that from the community so often that we are spending a lot of our city money on this and it's literally about nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars out of that thirty-two million dollars. So.
But I mean, I, I do think we have to all remember that when we get the final cost estimate, I would be very surprised if it's not a little bit more than that. And we will have to come up with the addition above that thirty-two million.
That would be safe for us to budget for.
Right. Needs to come into our discussion about what we might be doing with other resources and keeping some in contingency, in my opinion, when we get there in a few, in a little while.
Um, that's all part of that midtown discussion of the, the need for some contingency on this, plus the need for money to connect this to something. Um, and how that all relates to Franklin and Greenwood.
Um, how did the lottery bond proceeds, uh, enter into this, uh, funding stack?
Yeah, so that, yeah, what do you mean in terms of?
I mean, just how did we, because before we were counting on having to pay this ourselves, right? And then, then how did we, how did we come up with that? How did we make that happen?
So, yeah, it was just political with the, with the state legislative to.
So that was from the state?
Yeah.
Legis- legislature gave us that, okay?
Yeah, the congressionally directed funding was on top of the raise grant from the feds, but the lottery money was from the state.
In our, is it fair to say that our, our lobbying efforts, uh, from, at the city level helped bring this home for us?
Yes.
So what, so I guess the point is well done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move to authorize an amendment substantially of the form presented and as approved by the city attorney's office to the agreement with the state of Oregon for delivery by the Oregon Department of Transportation, the Hawthorne Avenue Pedestrian and Bicyclist Overcrossing Project, allocating five million dollars in state lottery bond proceeds, five point seven million in federal congressionally directed spending, and nine hundred and sixty-two, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars in Oregon Community Pass grant funds to the project, reducing the city's local contribution to approximately nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars and the total project cost of approximately thirty-two million.
Second.
Moved by Council Norris, seconded by Council Platt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item seven. This is the second reading of an ordinance amending Bend Municipal Code Chapter nine point five zero signs as amended during the first reading of the ordinance to update standards for portable signs and murals to allow electronic signs for certain types of signs and various other minor revisions.
I move for the second reading and adoption by roll call vote of the ordinance to amend Bend Municipal Code Chapter nine point five zero signs as amended during the first reading of the ordinance and as proposed in Exhibit A and based on the findings in Exhibit B.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Council Franzosa.
Aye.
Council Mendez.
Aye.
Council Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Perkins.
Yes.
Council Norris.
Yes.
Council Platt.
Aye.
This is the second reading of an ordinance adopting a statutory development agreement as amended during the first reading of the ordinance to modify two residential land division approvals on Bachelor View Road on sites owned by Bachelor View LLC and Bachelor View Properties LLC.
I move for the second reading and adoption by roll call vote of an ordinance adopting a statutory development agreement as amended during the first reading of the ordinance to modify two residential land division approvals on Bachelor View Road on sites owned by Bachelor View LLC and Bachelor View Properties LLC.
Second.
Seconded, uh, roll call vote again? Council Franzosa.
Aye.
Council Mendez.
Yes.
Council Riley.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Perkins.
Yes.
Council Norris.
Yes.
Council Platt.
Aye.
Now we have the city managers report.
I have a couple of quick updates for you tonight. Um, you may have seen around town that the Veo Bike Share has launched. Um, that occurred on July seventh. Have some quick numbers for you. So as of yesterday, there's been sixteen hundred and forty-two trips with Saturday being the peak with over five hundred trips on the bikes. It's a total of over twenty-seven hundred miles traveled. And the average, uh, trip length is about one point seven miles. We have great data to see where these bikes are going. Most of the activity is occurring on the west side um, and between Newport and the Old Mill and downtown to fourteenth. Um, a couple of things to note about Veo, um, they have a um, local team of their employees. They don't hire gig workers, so they have their own staff who are helping with operations. And we've implemented some new tools to help ensure that, um, there's compliance with the policies. So we're able to ensure or to, to see monitoring, rebalancing and redistribution of the bikes. Um, identify those that have been unattended for a while, and if any of them are blocking ADA ramps. So, um, there's some really, some good active management happening. Um, just wanted to let council and community members know that if you have feedback, questions, or concerns about the Veo bikes, please use Bend Works. That's our, we have a mobile app and do that online through the city's website. It helps us to track um, data on those and quickly address issues should they occur.
And could you just repeat because we often hear, uh, um, questions about how to park them and where they should be parked. You mentioned, uh, not blocking ADA ramps. Any, can you add anything else about how they should be appropriately parked?
So there are, um, clear instructions on where you can park the bikes. Um, they're not supposed to block sidewalks, ADA ramps. Um, and to, in your session with the bike, you have to actually submit a picture that shows where the bike is parked. So, again, utilizing some technology to hopefully have less obstruction and, and the rights of way.
Thank you.
And I've been saying it wrong, obviously. I've been saying Veo.
It could be Veo.
No, I, 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 I'm trusting you. I, I'm trusting you.
Also, they do have a, um, a low income program, and if you're a member of AARP, you also get a discount. So, uh, if you're interested, look into that.
Right, um, we are wrapping up street preservation. So over the next two weeks, we'll be doing the final push there. There will be, um, paving and striping on Eighth between Greenwood and Butler Market this week through Friday or through this Friday, um, on Jameson. Will be next week for paving between Empire and Highway twenty. Tunnel, um, will occur next week. Galveston, um, west of Fourteenth Street will be next week. That'll be paved on the twenty-ninth, and then Simpson between Colorado and Mount Washington. We'll have work done on the twenty-eighth through the, um, through August third. So home stretch here. And then, yeah, just wanted to quickly mention at the last council meeting, there was some conversation about safety concerns at the parking garage. Um, Toby had shared that we had extra patrols between, over the Fourth of July holiday. Um, didn't receive reports of any unusual activity that we have the Bend Patrol Services out there. Um, and they did ask a couple groups of teenagers to, to move on. Um, on the Fourth of July, the Freedom Ride did go through the parking garage.
Oh, wow.
So there was two hundred riders who went through the garage. Um, but.
No incidents.
No incidents. Oh. Um, and then last thing that I wanted to touch on is the changes to the council meeting schedule. We have, um, talked about this at a recent council meeting. So beginning the week of August eighteenth, we will be shifting the council meetings. The council business meetings will continue to be held on the first and third Wednesday from six P M. to, um, nine P M. ish. Um, executive sessions will be held at five P M. if they're needed. And the council work sessions will be moving to the Monday before the business meetings. The exact timing on that is still being finalized, so more information to come.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll adjourn the city council meeting and hand the gavel over to our esteemed legislature.
I'm going to call this, uh, meeting of the Bend Urban Renewal Agency to order for July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And we have one item on the agenda tonight to talk about forwarding the Emblem Tax Implement Finance Plan and Report to the Planning Commission and taxing districts and eventually back to ourselves. And I think Jonathan, was Jonathan here? There he is.
This is a public hearing and adoption of a resolution to forward the Bend Planning Commission affected taxing districts and the Bend City Council, the Emblem Tax Implement Finance Plan and Report.
I think I need to open the public hearing, right?
Well, good evening, Chair, members of the commission. We are actually doing this from the sun's eye, so.
Yeah.
So, uh, staff is going to present a brief overview. You went through this process two months ago. It's the same process as before, but we'll do a high-level overview. So we'll identify the process of establishing an urban renewal district. Uh, then we will review the TIP plant areas and reports. We will provide the public comment, if there is any, with questions from Borough towards them or staff. And then Borough will deliberate and provide a motion. Little bit of background in the process to date. On October eighteenth, um, Borough passed the policy on TIP assistance, uh, following public review and input. And then on June eighteenth, Borough conducted applicant interviews. For this one, it was the Emblem Project. You also reviewed the project and directed staff to bring back a draft TIP plan report. While it's not on this, uh, slide, you did pause the tax increment assistance policy for further, uh, policy review. But the employment policy is still active within the urban renewal districts. Just a brief summary of the process. Excuse me, you will consider and potentially recommend the TIP plan, uh, for adoption to the city council. That will, uh, kick off the consult and confer period, which will go through four different stages. You'll go to the Planning Commission for comp plan conformance. We've already had an identified date. If you do provide a recommendation on August eleventh. We will provide notices to our taxing districts and they have the opportunity to request a public, uh, presentation from staff. Staff presented twice, three times last, uh, round to BPRD, the County Library Board, and the County Commission. We will also send out a public notice, which is required by state statute. And then city council will have a public hearing scheduled for September seventeenth. This entire process is called consult and confer. The standard typical, uh, timeline is forty-five days, but we will exceed that with the September seventeenth process. The recommended TIP plan for adoption, uh, for recommendation, excuse me, follows what a TIP plan report is. A TIP plan is, uh, identifies, uh, projects to be funded. It provides a map and legal description of the area. It has to meet the relationship to local objectives and land uses, and it establishes a maximum indebtedness. Report, which is Exhibit B in your staff packet, provides the existing conditions in the area, the reason we are selecting the area, the blight remediation plan, estimated cost, and then the financial impact analysis. So for project emblem, we want to highlight the broad relationship, the state and local objectives. This project does provide housing units needed as described in the Oregon Housing Needs Assessment. The plan supports the Bend Comprehensive Plan Goals one, five, and eleven, which is public involvement, housing, and growth management. One of those key aspects is it makes efficient use of large blocks of vacant land that meets the city's housing needs. And also the southeast areas intended to provide for employment uses to take advantage of good transportation that allows mix of uses to intend, intended to increase the completeness of the existing low-density neighborhoods. The growth management aspect is, the little star is the proposed project, which is down in the lower right-hand side. It is infill development. It is near parks, schools, and commercial lands, and it's also a development in the, uh, ice, in the identified neighborhood commercial center. In addition to Bend Development Code, the proposed project will meet the accordance with the BDC. It will provide a variety of mix of housing types. It will create neighborhood commercial developments, and it will establish compatible transitions between existing and future development. So the project itself is located along Ferguson Road, which is at the intersection of Knott and near High Desert Middle School. The proposed area is eight point three eight acres. The current assessed value is a hundred and one thousand dollars. The zoning is medium and high-density residential. The identified blighted conditions that are identified in your, uh, TIP plan report is inadequate infrastructure and stagnant and unproductive land. The proposed maximum indebtedness is twenty-two point one million. The plan term is twenty-six years, which allows for two years of construction and twenty-four years of projected assistance. And the projects identified in the plan is development assistance for the project and then the plan administration. The estimated total cost of each project is as such twenty-one point four for the development assistance over twenty-four years. The administration of six hundred and sixty-three thousand. An administration is the audit, the financial analysis, all the stuff that is required with administering a financial document with a total of twenty-two point one million. Just to remind you of what the project is, it's an eighty-five million dollar garden-style apartment. It's located at six one one zero five Ferguson Road. The proposed units are two hundred and sixty-four with the average market rate ran at twenty-three hundred dollars with a proposed certificate of occupancy in twenty twenty-six. They did qualify for the extended rebate, which they provided more than the fifteen percent of units as established by the base policy. They've, uh, dedicated twenty percent, which are fifty-three units between seventy and ninety percent, which is the expanded affordability for twenty-four years. In addition, they are, uh, committing to using forty-five percent of local contractors, and they are going to get their NGSB green energy certification. The proposed project's breakdown is a hundred and twelve units will be one bedroom, a hundred and twenty-eight units will be two, and then twenty-four units will be three bedrooms. Down below, you'll see that five percent of those will be seventy percent AMI, five percent will be eighty percent AMI, and then ten percent will be ninety percent AMI. The financial impacts, the impact is on the current revenue from the vacant plan, which will gen, which will cost the general fund roughly a hundred and twenty-eight dollars per year for twenty-four years. Because urban renewal does not affect bonds and levies, it will generate three point nine million for schools, parks, and fire. This is a project that is located on a parcel that was incorporated into the UGB in twenty sixteen as noted with the applicant interview and some of your questions to the applicant at the last session. This is a project that also has transitioned between three project owners. So in addition, we will generate four point seven million for SDC revenue with two million going towards parks. If you do decide to move forward with the process to adopt, we will enter into the consult and confer. There will be an online open house as there was before in the month of August. It will go to the Planning Commission on August eleventh. We will mail the notifications out to all property owners in August. We'll probably have a meeting with Deschutes County, and then on September seventeenth, there will be city council public hearing.
Are there any questions from councilors?
Jonathan, I, am I, I noticed that you had underlined the seventy percent on the AMI range to ninety percent there. Am I remembering that there used to be a sixty percent component, or am I misremembering that?
That was project.
Okay. So the seventy percent underlined is no significance there?
Uh, the seventy percent underlying is the significance because it's the expanded affordability. So they're meeting two sides of that expansion, which is they're providing twenty percent of units, which is above the fifteen.
Right.
And they're going drastically below the ninety percent down to seventy percent.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Councilor Franzosa?
Thank you, yeah, I had my. Um, just Jonathan, hey, did you do um, uh, analysis of their pro forma, the. Unit cost. At eighty-five million dollars for two hundred and sixty-four units is about three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That feels really high for multifamily, um, as for that really high. Unit price.
Uh, that's, that's correct, Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Member Franzosa, so. In the previous meeting, we did have uh, the applicant provide their financial impact and you asked question, well, not you, but. Borough asked questions, their three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars per unit is actually far below than some of the other construction units. That are occurring in the city of Bend, so we feel that this is at least in line with market conditions.
Got it, and, and then just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I can provide follow-up information for that, too.
Okay, um, I, another question, um, just to confirm, so the, the, our um, fellow taxing districts did submit. Comment, um, basically concerned that at the use of tax increment financing. On-site specific properties such as this, is that, is that correct, and what was the response the city provided to those neighboring, or those adjacent taxing districts?
So to my knowledge, Counselor, uh, the, the two letters that we received from taxing districts was BPRD. And the County Library Board, which indicated that they are concerned with not the use of TIF onsite-specific. But the use of TIF in general, uh, with projects. As any taxing district would when an urban renewal district is considered. Our response to those two, both at the staff presentation to those meetings and also as a follow-up. Was the reason that we feel that the impact is minimal and it's only on the current vacant land. Is because these parcels have remained vacant for ten years and have transitioned multiple times between multiple property owners. So we feel that TIF is needed for assistance, not only to generate the development, but also to provide the affordability. But uh, to follow up one more thing, they did request that if Borough was going to move forward with policy review and development, they'd like to be involved.
Yes, the mayor and I, um, and city manager King meet with, with a couple members of the Parks Department and staff. On a regular basis, this is something we're continuing to discuss to make, to see how we can partner better in the future, um, and things like on TIP.
Okay. Um, I think it would be good for, since Borough members are voting on this, for Borough to hear. What those neighboring taxing districts are saying, um, I understand, I thought the law required, the ORS required the Borough to respond formally. But is that just to like a. Opposition, or is it just a letter of, I don't know, interest?
So the two taxing district letters that did provide uh, comment on the last one was a comment on the policy, not the TIF, not the TIF plan or report. And as there was not a comment on the TIF plan or report, Borough was not, or excuse me, city council was not legally obliged to respond. Uh, but Borough as council did respond that they would participate in those ongoing conversations about policy development.
Okay, and then can you confirm adjacent to, so this property is not commercial, this is multifamily, correct?
Yes, part of the parcel is a high-density residential and a portion of that is medium-density residential, neighboring uh, community commercial.
Adjacent to the community, and then there's a property adjacent to this parcel that is under development currently, correct?
I think with the single-family uh, development with Lennar.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, as I've said in, in past meetings, I, I disagree with the um, the blight designation based on. Stagnant land since adjacent parcels are under development, um, and I, I am concerned as a, you know. As a member of Borough and elected member of this body that. Yeah, that we're relying on that, uh, that we're relying on that to justify this investment, so. Those are all my comments, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions for staff? Okay, um, is there anybody here for public comment? Um, let's see, one of the board members for BPRD, are you, did you want to comment tonight, Donna?
Okay.
Hearing no public comment, I think I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any further discussion from Borough? Members?
I, I just wanted to say that I uh, opposed the adoption of this, this uh. Project, but um, tonight we are focused on the adoption, and I don't have objections. Of the, on, based on the adoption of the plan, uh, my reservations, I think, were similar to some of the concerns that Councilor Franzosa had expressed. As well as the magnitude for this particular project that. I think was multiple times more per unit than other projects, granted, it's uh, different kinds of units. It's a much different, mu- much larger kind of project, um, so I still have those, those reservations, but. Count, uh, Borough, excuse me, Borough has uh, um, already adopted, uh, um, designated the area. Um, and I think approved of the, 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 the concept, and so, having said that. I don't have any reservations on the adoption plan as set forward tonight.
Right, so I have a motion then, to move forward.
To adopt the resolution forwarding the Emblem Tax Implement Finance Area Plan and Report for Public Review and Comment.
Second.
So moved by uh, Mayor Proton Perkins, and then Secretary of Defense by Councilor Platt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Councilor Franzosa?
Nay.
One opposed. She passes, and I think that's what we have for tonight, so we will. Move to adjourn. Thanks, everybody, eight-ten.
Wow.